Hey, hey, everyone. Linda, did you email me the one I'm supposed to speak on with the Black History Month?
Do you want me to resend it?
Yeah, I couldn't find the. Yeah, can you reset that because I couldn't find what I'm supposed to say?
Will do.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we'll get started. I'm thinking Melissa will join us here momentarily. First of all, I don't even know, is Frank re situated at this point? Frank, are you there? All right, Melissa's on, Frank's not now. Okay, let's get Frank in and he had to go to a different desktop. So as soon as Frank joins us, we're ready to go. You know, I should read a Valentine's poem or something. I don't have one in front of me while we're waiting. Who has a poem?
Linda? Make one up.
No, no, no.
You're a poet. We know it.
Oh, no, no. There's some out there somewhere, but love is simple. There used to be a, 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 a cartoon. Do you remember that? Love is, it was called?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, years ago. I had a friend at school who collected them.
With those little people on them.
Yeah.
That was like college years.
Jeff, my picture behind me is your Valentine's Day gift.
Yeah, it's nice. Where was that?
It's antedum.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. It's what it looked like on Saturday. It's beautiful.
Jeff, can't you start with the roses are red, violets are blue and take it from there?
No, I'd screw that up too. How's that? So, all right, we have Frank with us. Frank, if you don't have a poem, we're going to ask you to go right into the vacant home tax.
Sure. Can everybody hear me now? Does it sound better?
Yes, you're as good as a rising guy.
Okay, well, I belong in his office then. I had to move offices. It must be the other office. Okay. All right, give me one moment here. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, does everybody have, see the PowerPoint I have up? Great, okay. Well, thank you, Council President. I have a very brief presentation this evening in regards to what's on the agenda, which is vacant property tax. I'm calling it registration and we'll talk about real briefly why I'm presenting it as a registration. So let's, I only have a couple of slides here, just to give us a quick idea of what we're talking about this evening. In your council packet and also sending email out over the weekend, this, I guess, I believe this topic is a result of a memo sent by Jonathan Zabala, who suggested that we take a look at a vacant property tax. And I believe everybody got a chance to take a look at that memo and his suggestion. So in this PowerPoint, I'll talk about his memo and the highlights of what he's suggesting. Also, I believe in 2008, council had a draft ordinance with vacant property registration. And I'll talk a little bit about that, what's in that ordinance, what some other cities do, and a set of recommendations how to move forward. So the topic vacant property registration, what exactly is the goal and objective of that? Well, it's simply to protect the public health, safety, and in promotion of the general welfare of our city. So really, the goal here is to encourage restoration of properties to productive use and to make sure there's minimal maintenance and safety standards. So by having this vacant property registration process, which I'll talk about a little bit further, we're able to identify these vacant properties and to be able to have a system in place to try to encourage the restoration of these properties, but mostly making sure that they're safe buildings. Now, as many of you already know, the effects of vacant properties on our community. Well, there's lower value of the surrounding properties. So if your home or business is next to a vacant property, it affects your property value. Certainly vacant properties bring in less property tax revenue. Many times prop, uh vacant properties, there's accumulation of trash and debris. Certainly, many times there's unsafe conditions air created and certainly increase a risk of fire. And overall, there seems to be a potential increase in crime. So when you have all these factors in place, the vacant properties certainly, in many cases, not in all cases, but in many cases contribute to the blight. So we talked briefly about, okay, what vacant properties, you know, why we want to address them and, you know, some of the negative effects of it. Uh, there was a memo sent to City Council from Jonathan Zabala. I don't have a lot of background on, I just know about the memo and I took an analysis, a analysis of the memo. But, um, so basically what the, what Jonathan Zabala, I believe he works for some kind of nonprofit in DC. This is something towards some of the work that he does. So it is very kind of him and very thoughtful. They spent the time to take a look at Reading and gives us some suggestions. What he's pretty much suggesting is that the city may want to consider an empty home tax. So you asked, what is that? So basically, it's a 2% tax on the assessed property of empty homes. Now, in his report, he noted that per the American Community Survey, which we've talked about this before, is part of the census. This is the most recent census information, 2019. It identified 12% of the properties in City of Reading, 4018, are considered vacant per the census. Now, our, our staff also indicated, just to put it in perspective, out of those properties, 286 are certified as blighted. So not all vacant property are necessarily in a blighted status, but they are vacant. Now, what the memo is suggesting.
Frank, how many were blighted of that, did you say?
Uh, 286, I believe. And I don't know, Linda, if that sounds about right. I know, um, you're on the blighted property review committee, but I have listed here per journals, about 286 roughly are certified blighted. That's the number that was provided to me. So not all 4,000 vacant properties are blighted, but most likely more than 200 are also. So when we look at this memo and it talks, this policy memo talks about the empty home tax, as I suggest, as I said, it's suggesting that we put 2% tax on the assessed property. And the, uh, the goal here is promote redevelopment of the property and generate additional revenue. So this was implemented, this empty home tax, the city has a potential of making us $6.2 million. So that's what's suggested in the memo. So the memo doesn't get in a lot of detail, but it's very thoughtful, it's insightful memo. It really gets us to think about how, how to address these type of things. Um, so the next slide, I'm going to talk about more of a registration fee approach because the tax is something we may not be able to implement in Pennsylvania. Municipalities don't really have the ability just to implement taxes. Their taxes are created by statute. So the stat, a state statute would have to be able to allow us to do that. Also, from a public relations standpoint, when we talk about taxes, I don't think anybody equates anything positive in taxes, even if there's a positive goal of taxes, when we use the word taxes, I think many times there's an immediate negative, a field toward it. And, um, the program that we're going to be suggesting is certainly we want to recoup costs, but we necessarily, the goal isn't necessary to promote, uh, generate revenue. This may not be a revenue generating program, but this memo from Jonathan Zabala is very insightful though, and it really got us to think about how to proceed. Uh, so let's take a look in Pennsylvania. That's usually the best models to look at. So sorry about that. So, all right, in 2008, let's start with that. There was a city draft ordinance that was put together that Linda provided to group. So I don't remember exactly what transpired in 2008 to bring this ordinance together, but it was, it was a very, um, progressive ordinance for its time, because I did a lot of research and back in 2008, there weren't many cities, if at all, that were addressing this registration fee model. Since then, a lot of cities and municipalities in Pennsylvania have adopted it. So when we take a look at the city, uh, what was being proposed 2008, it was basically you have to read, if your, if your property was more than 45, more than 45 days vacant, you were required to register the property with the city. And the public maintenance, PMI, uh, office would be the one that would manage the program. Now, when you would register your vacant property, there was a fee schedule starting at $500 for the first two years. And it was progressive, meaning like after two years, it would go up to a thousand. During this registration process, the city may conduct inspections. And any revenue collected from this registration process would be able to go to the blighted property review committee, which I believe around 2008 is around when it first got implemented. So they were looking at this as a possible revenue stream to help offset costs for the blighted property review committee. So that was in 2008. And it wasn't adopted, but there was conversation. So let's take a real quick look at the city of York and Wilkes-Barre. They currently have a registration model and this is a vacant property registration model. So in York, it's managed by the fire department because they believe, uh, they're very inspection heavy approach to this. So when you register your vacant property, um, the fire department runs it because they send fire inspectors to check the building for its safety. In York, the codes department, PMI, are the ones that do that in Wilkes-Barre. In York, they charge $65 fee. However, there's also an inspection fee too, so which is a few hundred dollars, depending on what kind of inspection it is. Wilkes-Barre charges a semi annual, which I thought was interesting, a semi annual fee of $300, which means $600 a year. Now, there are circumstances, a fee could be waived if you register your vacant property. If your property is currently being, uh, meaningful rehabilitation, like something is happening and there's permits being pulled and these properties are being rehabilitated, or you're in a current sales agreement, and this is York, they have a fee waiver. So, um, and I believe that's probably put in there to create some flexibility. Um, required inspections or additional fees, I, that, that's the Wilkes-Barre model I was talking about. It requires that when you register your property, you open, you, you know, you open up the opportunity for the fire department, which is mandatory to inspect your property. So these are the registration fee models that, that the city's been looking at with York and Wilkes-Barre. So the city's recommending that we look more of a fee, a fee type of thing than a tax. Um, because a tax, we may not be able to, be able to even implement something like that in, in Pennsylvania. I know Vancouver, I believe there's a city in California that has the tax and it may work well, but they probably have the ability to be able to implement a tax. Now, lastly, um, is some recommendation. So the 2008 draft ordinance is a great start. I think we just have to build upon it. If council's interested in moving forward in creating such a program that requires vacant properties to be registered, um, certainly administration thinks is a very good idea and we support the idea. Um, some possible revisions is 45 days may be kind of a small window um, to be, get meaningful data. The property should be vacant for about a year, just a suggestion. It's an easier baseline to work off of, um, because 45 days, properties are constantly changing hands at times. And there could be a tenant moving out of a property and maybe vacant for two months in between landlord tenant thing. So we believe from a year would be a great baseline, looking at the water consumption and some other data to determine the vacancy of the property. So if you're vacant for a year, that's a good sign. You may be vacant for a while. We do suggest a fee waiver program. We certainly don't want to create loopholes in the program, but we certainly want to be able to have flexibility when somebody's making meaningful rehabilitation to their property and they're actually making, you know, pulling permits and they're fixing the property. Or in the middle of a sales agreement, it only be fair, the sense of fairness that the fee would be waived because the property is on its way to being, um, being rehabilitated. Um, one of the hardest things to do is really establishing a fee schedule. So when we establish a fee schedule, we have to keep in mind, it's not a revenue enhancing approach, but it takes into account the full cost of providing the service both directly and directly. So when you run a program like this, it does cost, uh, cost money to do this. So we want to establish a fee that takes into account the full cost of providing the service. So we have a third party that would come in, uh, like we do with other fees to help establish the fee. And lastly, and just some internal conversation going back and forth about this is that, um, when we take a look at how's, what is our internal capacity, right? We could come up with a lot of programs. I know a lot of council people suggest, we, we're just a lot of good stuff. But what is our capacity to actually follow through with what's been recommended and been asked of us? So a program like this, and many cities have done this, is they contract with an extern, external vendor. There are companies and, uh, services out there that actually provide this service. So this isn't unique. Other cities have used external vendors to help search for the vacant properties because there's a whole process to do that and verifying your registration. And one of the challenges is really working lending institution owned properties. Because when properties are going, uh, when, when a mortgage company or a bank actually is the sole owner because of foreclosure, for whatever reason, it's very difficult to establish actually a point of contact. So this external vendor or, uh, on our behalf would be able to establish that relationship with this, uh, lending institutions or property management companies that are out of town. I mean, most property management comes to register the city is, is the lending institution owned properties and bring us the biggest challenge. So we would be able to come up with external vendor and use the fees collected to pay for those services. So that's, uh, that's our recommendation. I know there's probably a lot of questions and, and once again, this is a great idea. This comes in the heels of the memo sent by Jonathan Zabala that the council offices share with the administration. And certainly it looks like there's previous conversation about this. So we're kind of picking up, picking up where we left off in 2008 for whatever reason. Um, so that's the background. I hope that's, I hope it gives you some idea and some background there. We give you a little bit of recommendations. So, uh, that's pretty much the presentation. So I'm open to questions or comments.
All right, council members, um, just raise your hand or speak up if you, if you have any comments in this specific topic for Frank or questions. Johani, go ahead.
But just for the sake of understanding, like the data, and I know the data is from a few, several years ago, right? 2019, I think, or 2018?
Regards to, I'm sorry, council, in regards to the vacant properties?
I'm sorry.
Johani, we can't hear you for some reason. Did you lose your mic? I'm sorry, maybe it's mine. Go ahead.
How many vacant properties are there?
I'm basing off, uh, I get, the, the information that Mr. Zabala provided was through the American, uh, community surveys. And that's the best information made available and we have to work off that information. If you're asking us, we, because we don't have a vacant registration for, uh, vacant property, registration property, we don't have the exact numbers either. Uh, so we're working off of that data. Um, and also I see that, uh, the city clerk mentions, just for correction, that Act 511, everybody's seen this already, allows us to be able to tax her in these circumstances. So keep in mind, that's also an option because she's confirmed that Act 511 allows us to to do some kind of empty home tax. And I'm sorry, councilwoman, I didn't hear your whole question. I don't know if I answered your whole question. I couldn't hear.
Go ahead, Johani.
And I'm sorry, Frank, yeah, my AirPods and my headphones are doing something very bizarre right now. Um, can you hear me?
I can hear you really clear, yes.
No.
I can hear you.
Awesome. Okay. And I don't know if you answered the question because again, I was having some technical difficulties, but I think I was, I know that Linda might have mentioned that we have 380 properties on blight, right? Which is separate, but could be similar to the vacant properties, correct? I'm wondering if there's a distinction, distinction between vacant and blight.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if Linda, to defer Linda, I mean, I think I have an eye, I mean, I have an idea, but I don't know if somebody would have a better explanation on, you know, certified blight are the ones that have been identified, but I don't know if somebody, Jamal or Linda would be able to have a, a, a better definition? If, if that's what you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, just to answer, I think it's pretty clear. There's a lot of vacant properties and not necessarily at the level of blight, but they can quickly become that way. And I think that's part of what they say.
Yes.
You have another question, Johani, because I'm going to, you're done?
Yeah, yes. And, and then I would, I would be interested in learning, like, how does then a vacant property become registered? Like, who would want to register a vacant property if they know they have to pay a fee? How do we enforce?
That, that's a good question. People usually don't call us to tell us their property is vacant. Uh, unless they get a trash bill and they don't want to, or recycling bill, then they say their property is vacant, did not use the service. Um, that's one of the benefits of having a third party. Because a third party vendor will be able to go through our records and go through all our property parcels. And I would imagine one of the things they would look at is probably water consumption. It's usually a good indicator of, of what activities happening in the property. And I imagine to have a checklist. And then they would establish that most likely this property is vacant. Then a notice would be sent out to the property or the property owner of record. And then it'd be a process to follow up anywhere with a physical inspection to determine if it's vacant. So the truth is, we would have to go and identify these. It's very unlikely we'd get an enormous amount of people calling us to let us know. So a third party is important because they'll be able to get into the databases, establish using criteria. And then we would, you know, pretty much put the person on notice because there, if you don't register the property, there is a penalty like anything else, and there'll be a fine structure built in the ordinance for failure to comply. And believe me, it's a lot cheaper to comply than it is to get the fine and, uh, that, that approach.
Is that it, Johani?
Yes, I'm sure we will continue to flush this out. Thank you.
I had Bree next and then Donna. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bree.
Uh, Frank, how much?
Yes.
How much does it cost for like the audit or the third party to go around the city and do this?
That, that's a very good question. So what we would do is something like this, this is a professional service, right? So we just wouldn't pick any company. We would put an RFP out, request for proposal, or RFQ actually, or request for qualifications. So we would ask for different companies with different proposals to see, evaluate different proposals. And whatever the cost would be for this type of audit, that's where the user fee probably starts getting established because we want this to be at least cost neutral to implement this program. So whatever XYZ amount of dollars would cost for this third party, it would be passed on through the user fee. And, uh, but that's a good question. And I, and I'll tell you, I don't, I don't have a, a ballpark figure on really, no, because we haven't put any previous bids out there. So that's a very good question. And that's something we would go through the purchasing process. And then it would have to come to council for full approval. So we couldn't just, you know, allow the administration to sign off on it. You would have the, the council had the full ability to be able to review what we're recommending. And then you would make the final approval on this whole, you know, process with the contractor and fees.
One last question, um, it, will it be your office that oversees this project?
Well, ultimately, the managing director's office should oversee everything, right? Uh, but ultimately, specifically, uh, what's been suggested in other city models is the codes office, PMI, the, the the property maintenance, because they, most likely they're going to be needed to be part of this process. Because if somebody has to go out for a physical inspection, I would imagine it has to be some coordination with the PMI office. Um, I did mention in presentation, some departments use the fire department. But I believe the way our fire department is up, I don't know, we have really a lot of fire inspectors for this type of work. So the recommendation is, as you're, what your question you're asking is, probably have the, the public ma, uh, property maintenance division be the one that would be able to assist this third party contractor. With obviously the managing director being responsible overall for everything, right?
I do have one comment, one last comment for you, Frank. Um, we said that we weren't sure if there was an, if how a vacancy tax would look like, or if that's something that the city can implement. I believe that's something that we can implement as a city. Um, I know that Harrisburg has something similar with their libraries, uh, a dedicated library tax. I don't know how well that would go over with the public, but as far as if we can implement it, I just want to comment that I'm sure that that's something that the city can implement.
And thank you, because the council, uh, the, the council clerk mentioned in our group chat through her quick research that the Act 511, that's a bill, that gives the city abilities to levy certain taxes that apparently in that list of taxes, this is something that we can do. So I stand corrected. I wasn't sure, but we could, you could take the tax approach also. That's allowed under Act 511. So that's a policy decision that would have to be made, but a tax could also be implemented. Um, it's a little bit more complicated as putting assessment on property values and, uh, but certainly can be done and it's permissible.
All right, Bree, thank you. Uh, we'll, we'll go to Donna.
Just so everybody, uh, Linda just posted that Act 511 doesn't permit that.
So I, I misread. I think she was referring to the library tax. I'm sorry, I'm glad there's a lot of email stuff. So Act 511 does not allow vacant property tax. And if it doesn't allow it, would it be fair to say it's unlikely we can unilaterally enact a tax because that's a statute the state would have to give us? So I'm just looking, yeah. So thank you, Donna. I stand corrected again.
So you need to look more at the registration concept.
That's why I don't see any other municipality doing the tax, right?
Right. So it's, it's semantics, but it still works. Just a couple of things. One, that, um, the American Community Survey, the 2019 census effort, that's probably a lot more accurate than the 2020, which doesn't go into, into properties per se, but the American Community Survey, which is done every few years outside of the decennial census, um, is, is usually a pretty good arbiter of, of things and of, of, it's not perfect, but I think it's somewhat trustworthy. And you certainly can match up what our, what our figures are versus census figures for the big properties. Um, and then of course, Linda can speak in more detail about it, but there is at least half a dozen criteria that defines blighted versus simply vacant. So there is, there is a strong distinction there between the two. Um, I think number one, thanks to, to John, John Ball for this, because I think this is a great suggestion. Uh, I'm glad it was once thought about. I'm not sure what happened in 2008, but it's great to see that it's surfacing again. And I like the concept of, of it being cost neutral, once everything is served, is, is analyzed and how we're going to implement something like this. I do think it's very important because we all know how one or two vacant properties in a block or in a neighborhood can start destroying the entire neighborhood, both from structural problems, if you're in the middle of a row and you're impacted by that particular house or, um, just anywhere in any place from, from commercial buildings to, to, uh, to residences. Would there be a separate category for commercial buildings? Because often they're much larger. I mean, could you have, could you have a certain percent for, for commercial versus residential as you look to this registration and this fee levy?
That, that's a very good question. As we go further into this, because this is something came new, we can look at it, at that. And you, you bring up a good point because a lot of cities seem to focus on vacant homes. Because the commercial property is a whole different, um, approach that we may have to take. So if, if there's a thought of trying to move forward with this, if this is a policy we want to pursue, we can do some more research and differentiate between what the home, uh, you know, home, regular homes and residential, I should say, residential properties and the commercial properties and differentiate both and see what approaches we could take. We could certainly flesh that out.
Yeah, I think that'd be really good because these, some of these huge commercial properties have been so detrimental to, I mean, we, we saw it happen long ago with, with the Moss Street Fire, later on with the Latice Fire. We see what happens with these particular huge commercial properties that are let go or speculators sit on them. Um, just one other quick question that I'm done. Um, you talked about in, um, in York and others where there can be a waiver for properties being rehabbed. And if there is a current sales agreement, if there are other waiver criteria that are determined, who okay's the waiver? I want to just make sure that however we frame this, it is incredibly and importantly apolitical that friends of friends don't get waived because we all know the history of the city. And I just want to make sure going forward that that becomes extremely apolitical and entirely objective.
That's, and it's a, is a very good question. That's why I think a third party involved in this, that they can also be part of the waiver process because they would be removed from, you know, internal workings. And, and that's why, so they will be able to validate if the property deserves a waiver and they would issue that waiver under the criteria that we approved. So I, I would say that would be the approach we would take with the waiver program.
All right, additional comments? Anyone?
Yeah, Jeff, this is Marsha.
Yep.
Okay. So first of all, thank you, councilmates, for all the good questions and thank you, Frank. And of course to Mr. Zawala, uh, this is really pertinent in that our city can, uh, flounder if we don't take care of the vacant properties. And when you looked at the data sets, when you talked about, uh, the census, there's another real good data set. It's, it's the fire department. They're aware of the buildings that are vacant, that they consider dangerous for a fireman to enter. And so it would be interesting to look at what they have in their database and be able to prioritize those and being able to decide what properties need to be, uh, addressed. I know for myself, I have a vacant property, catty corner for my house. It's been that way probably for at least eight years. Been on the blighted list. The owner has no, uh, interest in doing anything. So eventually it's going to catch on fire. Uh, and I think that if we don't act on this, we're going to be costing the city more money. This is actually a cost savings because it saves the, uh, idea of the fire department having to respond. It improves the value of the neighborhoods. So we need to line up all those components that will make this work, figure out how we can be looking at the fees and not be afraid of this. Because the people that are and not be afraid of this, because the people that are abandoning these properties aren't afraid of abandoning the properties. They're doing that because it saves them money, they don't have to invest. So we need to be able to take the same kind of strong approach and say, we're trying to save the city. Let's move ahead and not let folks just feel that they can have a property, walk away from it, not do anything about it, and then let the city figure out what needs to happen. And that's some attitudes of some people when they walk away. Well, the city will eventually take care of it. So I look forward to having this real flushed out, and then we can, you know, move forward.
All right, anybody else? I, I have a few comments, if nobody else. So, yeah, I, I'm just a believer that uh, I really wasn't, I know on the surface, it, it, it sounds like the goal of this is to get, you know, abandoned properties, you know, unabandoned. Um, but I just don't, I don't like the idea of kind of a standalone solution to something we need a really comprehensive solution for. And we, you know, many years ago, we put a million dollars aside in an enterprise fund. You know, the goal was to get twenty, thirty properties a year back on the tax rolls. And, you know, not every empty property, obviously, is an abandoned property or, or a blighted property. Uh, but there certainly are some. Uh, the other argument is there are lots of occupied properties in the city that are bringing down neighborhoods just as bad as some empty ones, and I think that needs to be noted. If somebody's paying their taxes and they're keeping their property, whether it's empty or not, up to speed, according to all the other codes guidelines within the city, you know, I don't know that they should be, you know, penalized. And furthermore, if they're not paying their taxes and they're not keeping their property up to code, then they should be handled through the appropriate channels that we already have in place. So I'm just not, I'm not saying that this couldn't be a part of a bigger comprehensive solution, you know, which made sense, but you know, sometimes we create more work. And instead of getting better at the, the core stuff we should be doing, um, we create more things and it causes even more noise and things we have to think about, regulate, monitor, the, the whole fact of having an outside vendor, you know, just making money and tracking down empty properties, uh, throwing, you know, these bills out to people, then mitigating the ones that were honestly just empty and, and not. I mean, there's just so many circumstances. I would rather see us, you know, deal with the root problems so that we can eliminate, and Linda and I have talked about this with the blighted property, um, whole process, you know, the idea is to remedy those properties, but we can't remedy them if we don't have enough deterrents upfront to stop them from happening to begin with. And you know, you could end up having, especially in Reading, an even more detrimental effect for something like this, where having even more people walk away from properties, or just not acquire them to begin with. And even if they do, our process has to be whole enough that says, okay, new property owner, here's our expectations when you own a property in the city, you're ready. You know, you have, here's our codes, here's our, you know, tax guidelines, et cetera, et cetera. If we can master some of the things we already have, we can start eliminating, we'll never eliminate, but greatly reducing the amount of blighted properties. And again, you know, there are a lot of occupied properties in the city you're running that we can do a better job on and, and make the neighborhoods better. So I just, I just have this position, and, and I'd like to see us have a comprehensive housing program that deals with, you know, empty houses in the city, especially with the blighted properties. And again, that's why we put the million dollars away a couple of years ago. The hope was to do that every year. I'm just not one that's buying into a standalone solution. I know it's only, it's not aimed to solve the problem, it's aimed to, you know, help uh mediate it a little bit, but I'd rather see it be joined along with everything else in a comprehensive plan. So I don't know if I made any sense whatsoever, but uh, those are my thoughts. Any additional comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Real quick, I, hi Frank, and I think you probably answered this, but what was the point of registering a property?
Well, that's a very, and that's a good question. Uh, the purpose of registering the properties, first of all, it helps us identify that the property is vacant, now it's on the city's radar. So uh, what we could require is an immediate safety inspection uh, to make sure that the property i- is safe, that it's not in danger of uh having any unsafe conditions. Also, it allows us to begin the communication process, so the property doesn't slide into a blighted situation. So we're trying to be proactive to fight blight by trying to identify properties before it becomes to a situation where you have to demolish it. Um, and that's sometimes what happens to vacant properties, when they go unnoticed for a long time. So this registration process, Councilwoman, will help us identify the specific address, develop a, a record of how we approach it, and try to be as proactive as possible, so it doesn't slide into a, a blighted status where there's beyond repair, where the property would have to be demolished. But uh, that's, and then the other thing is, it also keeps the owner aware of encouraging the owner of the property to do something with the property, not keep it vacant. It, it, there, uh, the financial incentive to keep it vacant may be less if they have to pay a registration fee, inspection fees, and this is all done under the guise for public safety, because vacant properties do cer- uh, could, could potentially, not all, but potentially be a public safety issue.
Okay, so that's going to be tough to actually have people register.
Well, you bring up a good point. No, people most unlikely will come to us. So um, fair enough. So what we thought about the possibility, there's third parties, uh, there's companies and consultants that actually do this in other cities, well, they will help identify these properties on our behalf, and we'll reach out to them to have them register uh into the program. So we have to be proactive, we have to search and look for them. It's very unlikely they'll call us to register.
Thank you.
All right, and Jamal, before you go, I just, you know, that was part of my concern, I wanted to mention, because, you know, we're already out in these neighborhoods. Most of these properties, we can identify on our own. Now, I don't know that we've mastered yet, we, we know we haven't, we don't even have a, you know, a backend plan for the blighted properties that we already have. Um, so, you know, that's my concern. Another overlay on an overlay, we've already got, I forget how many we have in codes, but we have a lot of codes officers that see them. When I go on walks, I see lots of properties that have been vacant for a while, or I can tell they just recently went vacant, and uh, it's, it's not that hard to do, it's just what do we do with them? Jamal, I'm sorry, so go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much, Mr. Council President. I just would like to add on and expand to uh, the, the response that Frank offered about the third party. Third parties, uh professional companies, they usually get that information from different sources. Like, for instance, they have contacts with uh, with police departments, the uh, fire departments, uh, and they have contacts with, with the counties and, and many others, such as real estate agents. So their, their feed in is multiple areas in which we will be able to identify these vacant properties. Uh, but one of the important things about uh, registering the vacant properties is providing us with the contact information. Because in a very short period of time, a vacant property can be in good conditions, but the grass is growing and the uh, the, the trash is accumulating in there. So we would be able to contact the property owner or the property representative to be able to address with them the quality of life. And that is a very important thing, that we need to stay on top of it. Otherwise, all these vacant properties will, 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 will take uh, turn to the worst with the quality of life altogether. But I would like to add that too. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any comments on this specific topic? All right, if not, thank you, Frank.
Yeah, um, one, sorry.
Bree.
Sorry, um, Frank.
Uh, Bree.
Sorry, Jeff. Oh, God, I'm sorry, I just got off of work. Um, we mentioned, you know, having um, some, someone from Reading instead of having a third party, so I'm just recommending that maybe that's something that the maintenance, I heard Frank mention the maintenance department. What, and you, you, Jeff, you just said that they, that we pretty much know which houses in the community. So I'm, I mean, it would make sense to have maybe the maintenance department, if we have money like lying around, um, to just have them go about confirming which houses are blighted. And I know this is going to take a little bit more, but I just wanted to throw out, we have the maintenance department do that. I just.
Yeah, and, Brianna, I was referring to codes, the codes are already out in the neighborhoods. Um, you know, there may not be in every block every day, but you know, we do have enough eyes out there to see what's out there. Um, you know, part of the process, and I know Jamal, you and I have discussed this previously, is maybe improving, you know, the person, in a lot of buildings in the city that are filled, that we have a contact person for, in some cases, we may not, in case of our problems. I would think that would be the case for all properties, you know, abandoned or not. Um, so, yeah, but Brianna, I was referring to codes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The property maintenance division, when I said, uh, Councilwoman, I meant, when I meant the property maintenance division, um, that's, we call them codes, we interchange PMI and codes, as kind of, for this conversation, it's the same thing. A- a- and uh, the last thing I'll, I'll mention is, even if a third party is involved, it doesn't substitute the involvement of the property maintenance division. Their involvement would be critical regardless. So the third party wouldn't replace what we would need from the inspector. So, but, but point well taken, I'm taking a lot of notes here. And if it's something that the body's interested in, for us, the administration, to look into it further, I, we can come back with more details, if that's what, if everybody's interested in that.
All right, um, any comments, anyone? All right, thank you, Frank. Um, we're going to move on to the next item on our committee, the whole agenda, and I believe that's the uh, agenda review, I just double check. Yep, so let's take a moment to go through tonight's agenda. We do have a lot of items, but a lot of it's kind of uh, it's a lot of the appointments and stuff like that, we're going to be able to do in mass. Uh, right, so we have
Yeah.
Uh, two public speakers this evening, correct, Linda?
Correct, we have a written comment that I distributed earlier.
Oh, one's written and one's live?
No, both are written.
So you told me you had one that we distributed earlier, you had both distributed?
I'll send it again.
Yeah.
Okay, and who's going to read those onto the record?
Donna will.
Donna, you all right now?
Raise your hand.
Okay, good, I, I didn't see that, I was looking at the agenda. Okay. All right, and then we'll go on to uh, to, 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 to proclamations and presentations. Uh, Wesley's going to be reading um, the proclamation, uh, recognizing Black History Month. Um, and then we're going to go, oh, then we go into public comment, I'm sorry. So we'll do that first, I'm going to go to public comment. Um, then the approval of the agenda in minutes, of course, that includes the consent agenda legislation. I'm going to read uh, each of these items. The first one's an award of contract, authorizing the purchase of five interview room camera system upgrades for the current system that has reached its end its lifecycle from Signal Scape Inc. in Cary, North Carolina. This is a GSA Federal Supply Service at the cost of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. I'm assuming this is for the police department. Um, does anybody have any comments or questions about that specific award of contract? All right. Uh, the next item on the consent agenda is a resolution adopting and submitting to the DEP.
Excuse me, Council President?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had my hands up for a word of contract.
Yep, go ahead, Johnny.
Yeah, thi- this amount um, is, has already been allocated in our budget, correct?
It says so in the capital budget, yes.
Camera system, was it, was it? Okay, and then do we project that this system will last us about another ten years, just like the previous one?
Yes, that's what we're anticipating, that we, we get about the same lifecycle out of it, but possibly more, because we're getting a, a little bit larger uh, servers to go along with it, so that hopefully it uh, the servers last longer than the current ones.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, um, I'm going to read through the next five, six resolutions, since they're all related to uh sewage facilities, and anybody has any questions about any specific one can ask when I'm done. The, the first one is adopting and submitting to the DEP for its approval of sewage facilities, uh, Scott Street, for Scott Street. Uh, the next one's for nine sixteen North Ninth Street. And the next one's for two thirty-four North Fourth Street. The next one's six fifty Spring Street. The next one is seventeen hundred and seventeen sixteen North Twelve Street. And then the last one is ten ten Elm Street. And you can see each one references pretty much um, their specific use, other than Scott Street, uh, or North Ninth Street, I'm not sure, but that, that must be for the fire station. But the others are for the Supernatural's Market, they're on uh, Fourth and Elm, the other one is for, it's a delivery service, is what I'm being told, at six fifty Spring Street, and the other one is obviously for uh, Albright College. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments? Uh, and then, I'm sorry, the final one's for daycare. Anybody have any questions and comments? I guess, um, you know, typically, if we're making changes, or we have construction, and we have to change the sewer structure of the city, we have to get approval. Um, did anybody from the administration want to speak to that, or does anybody from council have any questions about that issue? All right.
Jeff, this is Marsha, just a comment.
Yeah.
And it has to do with just understanding what all this means, and I think it has to come at some type of educational program, maybe as we get a tour through the newly built sewage treatment plant, that we just all get like a one-on-one sewage uh education, because it's incredible, the city's responsibility to this is just enormous, and we don't talk about it a whole lot. But it's, I think, just really important. For me, it was a great learning curve when I went out to the sewage treatment plant and learned about the operations. Now we have a new one ready to open, so just a suggestion.
All right, any other comments? All right, if not, we'll move on to the next item on the consent agenda, is authorizing the solicitor to execute the forms to approve the repository bid for six thirty-one South Seventeenth and a Half Street. Any comments on that specific uh resolution?
And this is Marsha, again, I walked up to look at it, it's in my district, I'm okay with it, but you know, everyone else can decide.
All right, if there are no other comments on that specific resolution, I'll move on to the next item. It's a, it's a word of contract to Laura Repper of MSH Productions LLC at twenty-five hundred dollars per month to plan and organize the city's two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary celebration for a two-year period. Um, Donna, do you want to make a comment before we open up to questions?
Sure, sure, um. This was an advertised position, Laura was one of the candidates came forward. Um, a committee interviewed her, um, she will be working, she, she owns the LLC, so she'll be, um, she'll be, you know, working as, in the contract with the LLC. Um, she brings to the table amazing ideas, um, for the two seventy-fifth, which actually we will have the initial unveiling of a lot of the info, of some basic information, major information, um, coming up in mid-March. She is also has a strong background here in the city, she's a city native. She worked with DID, she organized the Reading one-twenty, was major organizer of that. She, her particular company organizes the Doylestown Bike Race and some other activities down there. Um, she has, is a familiar face at City Hall, as she has um, actually decorated City Hall for the holidays and past administrations. Um, she's bilingual, which is very important for this particular position. And she has already hit the ground running, um, working even before this contract was, was finalized. One other thing, um, to remove any, any inclination or any flood of politics from this, there's also been, thanks to Frank, Maria and Linda, um, a, an account set up with the Brooks County Community Foundation. And I don't know if Frank or Linda wants to speak more to that in terms of how we're going to interact with that or Maria. But that, again, you know, we want this to be a really great celebration. We think revenue will be, will be, um, will be raised for private businesses for the city, for different nonprofits, because of this particular celebration. But we want to make sure that all the monies and all the accounts are not privy to any political wins that might breeze through in the next few years. So if somebody wants to talk about the, the So, if somebody wants to talk about the, the community foundation thing real quick, I know this is just about Laura, but just to supplement. Maria, Frank?
Sure, uh, yes, um, um, it was decided by the committed to had a, um, to open an account with a five ones, five, five zero one C, which is a nonprofit organization. So, I came out with the idea of, um, Bruce County Community Foundation, everybody agrees, so I contacted them. And, you know, they were replaced and they say yes right away, that, um, is, they just going to set up a phone for the, um, for the two, two-seventy-five anniversary. So, I believe their phone is already, uh, you know, it's up and running and hmm, we take it from there, and they're going to be, uh, taking care of all the invoices that, um, that has to be paid, or the revenues coming in. Um, that's, I mean, we, the city's not going to be reborn at all. So that's right, is, we, uh, we, we decided to go, we first kind of community of foundation, they did it in the past. Um, they more than work on to do it again, so, thank you to them and to Frankie, uh, who has been very hard for Linda, Frank, all of us, uh, you know, have, I was handling that and that as well, so thank you everyone.
And one good thing about this as well, just to, to end this conversation quickly. Um, if there are any residual funds left over after the two-seventy-fifth concludes, that money will stay to help with future anniversary celebrations for the city. So, this will be an ongoing account working through the community foundation. Linda, do you want to add anything? Linda will be through the council office, um, the immediate supervisor, uh, for Laura, working with her directly as well. Do you want to add anything, Linda?
Nope, you covered it. And Maria, thank you.
Okay, additional comments on this, uh, item, anyone?
Yes, uh, to be able to say, I strongly support Laura, she's already knows what needs to be done here and came, I attended meetings very well prepared and trying to bring back as part of the two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth some of the real strong events that have been part of the city that, for some different, old different reasons, fell by the wayside. So I think what you're going to see is the two-seventy-fifth is going to be a, a resurgence of a lot of activities that we all felt were good for the city. And especially around the tourism side of it, so I was just really pleased by what I heard when I attended the meetings.
Okay, thank you, Johani.
Well, the sentiments of both, uh, Donna and Marsha, can you hear me?
Now we can, yep.
I think Laura's phenomenal and it's, and she's, I mean, she's amazing, she, she, she takes initiative, she's a go-getter, she gets it. And, and I love that she's not afraid to like get dirty, get her hands into getting things happen, so I support Laura. My question is more about oversight and management, so I understand that the community foundation will be monitoring invoices, making out the payments, is that correct?
That's correct. Also, Maria, Maria and Linda, Maria's the key person signing off, correct Maria? And Linda will be working with her, so we have, Maria's the perfect person for the oversight here, being the city auditor. Am I right, Maria?
Yeah, that's correct, and any invoice that need to be paid will be sent to me, I will review it and sign it. I mean, that we, we also sign, and then we, we send it to Bruce County Community Foundation, they, we divert the money to whoever, um, they have to pay, whoever need to be paid, so, and any money left at the end of the, uh, the two, you know, at the end of that, uh, the anniversary, it will be kept at the form, as Donna mentioned, and that money could be useful for the, for future anniversary of the city.
And a great thing, there will be a paper trail, Johani, I know that's really important to you, we've talked about that many times, Marsha. There'll be a paper trail that people can see how the money is raised and spent and all that, so be very transparent.
All right, thank you.
And for what the money, I mean, we paid an invoice, it had to say for what it is, I mean, we just want to pay, we just to pay. So we have to be familiar for what that invoice, huh, the purchaser for what it was.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Committee will be, um, I guess, um, responsible for like oversight in terms of intended outcomes event. I just want to make sure that we provide the necessary support for her to be successful.
Absolutely, and we're looking, not only for the city to be the key, you know, the key driver of this, but we welcome partners who, across the board, we want this to be, every bit as exclusive, inclusive as it can be, um. The youth are going to play a major role in this, so Wesson and the folks with the, with the youth commission. Um, this is just going to be an overall real inclusive, joyful celebration of the city and why people chose to make this city their home. So, I think Laura's a great cheerleader to, to, to coordinate everything, but anyone, ideas, whatever, go to Laura, come to any of us, it's going to be a happy, we need a happy year in the city, so. We'll, we'll make it happen.
Thank you Donna, any additional comments on this issue? Okay. All right, um, let's move on to the next item, uh, the next item is a bunch of, do, 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 let me just make sure I'm saying this, no, I'm sorry, the first, the next item is an award of contract to Kent Tech Consulting, Inc., um, they provide services which include checks and social media content, online content posted by individuals at a cost of fifty dollars per applicant, uh, they are specifically tailored to law enforcement and currently provide services for federal, state and local agencies all across the United States. And I think my understanding is that the scope of this is just related to the hiring of, uh, police officers. I don't know if the chief can speak a little more to that real quickly.
Yeah, uh, one of the things that I noticed, I was going through background investigations when we hire, uh, police officers, is that it was, for a number of reasons, it was really difficult for us to get a good grasp on the social media footprint of the individuals that we are hiring. In today's day and age, there's a lot of information out there on social media. So, our internal affairs lieutenant, uh, did a lot of digging into this, uh, met with, uh, an individual from Baltimore Police Department, um, who had worked with the Department of Justice with this agency, uh, or, or this company to do these background investigations. What would cost us over a hundred dollars to have our criminal investigators do these, uh, social media inquiries? Uh, we pay them a fifty-dollar fee, uh, they take a deep dive into the social media, uh, of the individuals we're looking to hire and then issue a report to us. So it's, uh, much needed, uh, especially in this day and age. Um, and it is a very economical way for us to do that, a very thorough way for us to do that. Uh, this is coming out of the remaining funds, uh, from our benchmark, uh, program, uh, in the budget, which is our kind of our HR program for the police department, that tracks discipline and, uh, use of force and all those types of things. So, um, it's already funded, um, and it, it only depends on how many folks that we run through the program is what the, the cost is.
All right, thank you Chief, uh, any questions or comments, go ahead, Johani.
I read, like, how much are we projecting to spend, just so that we keep that in mind, you know, for future budget years?
Yes, good question, I mean, this is something that we would look to put as a regular line in the budget. We typically will do, I, I would say definitely under a hundred background investigations a year, uh, probably uh, when we're doing two, two lists, I would say closer to the sixty, so it, it's not a huge expense. Um, and certainly a lot less than we would pay our investigators to do it.
All right, thank you, any additional questions, anyone? All right, if not, we're going to move on to the next item. Um, and it's actually a bunch of resolutions, just reaffirming the appointments to the boards, authorities and commissions. I'm not going to read each one at this point, I'll have to read them later on, so, um, all the way from, oh boy, lost my mind here, from K, resolution, starting under the letter K, all the way to double E, right, so, um, I know Wesley, uh, I don't know if you've had a chance to review with Linda, um, I think we put you down as an alternate on one or two, um, if you have a desire to join forces on another board or commission, um, just to, uh, let Linda know and we can discuss it, you know, as time goes by, but, uh, these are the appointments we all discussed a couple of weeks ago. Does anybody have any comments or questions on them at this time? Nobody's trying to bail out, go ahead, Johani.
Read them, are you going to group them, like you've done in the past, are you saying?
Well, these are, and agenda, so we don't have to vote on them individually here, I do have to read them all, so. Uh, I will read them during the regular meeting. All right, uh, okay, no other comments on that, we'll move on to the next, uh, item FF, award of contract. For the free-flowing potassium permagon, blah, blah, whatever, to Caris USA Peru, who is second, who was the second lowest bidder with a total bid price of forty thousand, five hundred dollars. Caris was chosen over the lowest bidder due to the fact that the lowest bidder's material is too moist and clogs in the chemical feeder. The selected bidder will not have a supply chain issue as they also manufacture the chemical, whereas other bidders must get shipments from other companies. Therefore, the low bid of George S. Corn chemical is rejected as not being responsible under applicable law, and I'm assuming this is for the, uh, the sewage plant, um. I don't know, Kyle, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, that's one of the processes over at the plant.
Okay, same with the next item, I'm assuming as well.
Correct.
Thank you Kyle, anybody have any questions or comments on that, just standard purchasing?
Yeah, Jeff, this is Marsha, I just wanted to thank the administration for the clear description of why that particular bidder was chosen and the justification for not choosing the lower bidder, I think that's important to have in the, uh, resolution.
All right, thank you, if there are no other comments, I'll move on to the next award of contract, again, this is for the sewage treatment plant. This is to Polydine, Inc. in Ray Riceboro, Georgia, the low bidder for catonic dry polymer at a price of two dollars and twenty-five cents a pound for approximately sixty thousand pounds for conditioning desk domestic wastewater sludge for gravity belt thickening and belt fiber press de-watering. Anybody have any comments on that item? I hope not. Okay, good, thanks, we'll move on to the next item, resolution appointing EMS Deputy Chief Michael Sninsky as one of the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinators. Uh, anybody have any comments on that?
I, I just stepped through it quickly, if you recall, about a year ago, Walt Bauer, when he was EMS Deputy, was uh, Deputy, um, EMC and assisted the fire marshal, who's our emergency management coordinator. On his retirement, uh, Mike, who's now got promoted to EMS Deputy, but we didn't pass nothing through officially appointing him to this PMA Deputy Coordinator's position. So, it's just a follow-through, even though he's been assisting them for the last year anyways.
All right, thank you Chief. Um, the next item is a resolution authorizing conditional offers of appointment to the following probationary paramedics. Uh, be effective March first, Cody Rasselli, Elizabeth Stephens and Stacy Nine. Chief, a, a brief comment on those?
Yeah, brief comment, they went through the, the civil service process for the non-firefighter paramedics and all. Uh, that, and, uh, they all made it through the, uh, process and are, the only three on the list that we, and we made, we made conditional offers to them. Uh, they're going through all the appropriate checks, we're looking to bring them on as of March first, to help. It still doesn't quite fill our paramedic ranks, but gets us closer.
Yeah, it's a tough position to fill, right?
Yeah, it has been.
All right, any additional comments on that specific, uh, go ahead, Johani?
What is the probationary period, how many months?
One year. One year, now, they'll do a two, about a two-month training period before they get released, but the probationary period is a year.
All right, any additional comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the final item under the consent agenda. Is an award of contract to nine eleven safety equipment in Jeffersonville, PA to provide the annual National Fire Protect, Protection Association required third-party inspections and repairs to firefighters' personal protective clothing. While the cost of the services may vary from year to year, the total annual costs are not to exceed fifty thousand dollars in any given year without further approval by council. Nine eleven safety equipment is a PA CoStar's vendor and the purchase is reflective of the CoStar's pricing, uh, Chief?
Yeah, basically, uh, the, the protective clothing that the firefighters wear by the NFPA standard is required to have a third-party, uh, inspection done every year along with an advanced cleaning and all, that's beyond what gets done in our cleaners. So, it gets farmed out, nine eleven throughout the Norristown area, they'll come pick it up, take it, do the cleaning. And then there's also, uh, funds built into the budget here is also, as they come across items that are in need of repair, they'll handle the repair as well.
All right.
We've been using them for the last five years, the contract was up for renewal.
All right, any comments or questions, anyone? All right, thank you Chief, uh, we will move on to the rest of our agenda, the administrative report this evening. Uh, Frank, you're going to be on to, to provide that?
Yes.
All right, and then we'll have Maria with the, uh, uh, city auditors report, we have a brief, uh, presentation from the Reading Redevelopment Authority. Ernie is going to, uh, provide us with that update. And then we will move on to ordinances for vinyl passes this evening, I'll start off with the first ordinance is bill number one oh six dash twenty twenty-one, amending the city code chapter twenty-three, part twelve oh one downtown revitalization, public-private partnership. I believe we're going to still continue to table this, is that correct Frank?
Yes, next, I believe next week, uh, the administration's going to be presenting the StanTech report and the downtown, uh, initiatives, so I think we want to table until we do that presentation.
All right. The next item is bill number five dash twenty twenty-two, amending the twenty twenty-two position ordinance as per the mayor to reflect the change to the title of the position of executive assistant in the mayor's office. Assistant, and to reflect an increase in the base salary of the special assistant position from fifty-three thousand to sixty-three thousand, sixty and fifty cents per year. Uh, is this scheduled to be voted on this evening, Frank?
Uh, we, we can take, we're going to ask to be tabled again today until we have some further information provided.
All right. All right, so if somebody will make the motion to table that, I appreciate it. Um, the next item is bill number, uh, seven dash twenty twenty-two, amending the city code chapter five seventy-six, part nine, snow and ice emergency primarily regarding snow removal in the downtown. Um, this is the parking authority one, or what, what is this one again, Frank?
This is with the parking authority, uh, I do know when we presented, uh, the ordinance, that there were some questions about if this ordinance was empowering additional powers to the RPA. The administration said it does not, however, I believe there was a request for a state solicitor to review the ordinance to determine if that was the case or not. So, uh, we're hoping to move, we would like to see this ordinance move forward this evening, uh, pending, um, in, uh, input from the solicitor to confirm it, that does not give additional powers to RPA. So I would have to ask Fred to weigh in on that, if he had the opportunity to review the ordinance to confirm that to be accurate. Right?
Yeah, and I, this was posed to me yesterday, I, I had a chance to review it briefly, uh, well, I guess the question is, what, what exactly were the concerns? I know, I do remember them being raised a couple of weeks ago, but I'm not exactly sure what the additional powers would even be.
All right, well, let me open up to the floor here, uh, who would like to go first?
This is Marsha. So I wasn't clear as far as how, uh, the signs were to be posted. Okay, the, whether they were going to be removed at the time, the coordination between the Public Works Department and the Reading, uh, Parking Authority. And so that, for instance, if the, uh, snow clearing of the, uh, spaces occurs and the signs still remain, then people will get ticketed for parking in those spaces. And that, it was just a more of a coordination piece, to make sure that we're not having the Parking Authority ticket people, and then the other issue, uh, is, you know, how they get ticketed, are they going to be ticketed, uh, through the, are they going to be receiving notice of it on their windshields, which isn't the practice right now? So I just had a lot of questions about the implementation. I didn't want to hear, uh, see the downtown businesses being hurt by people getting ticketed once the streets were cleared.
Thank you, it's a good question, and we've learned from our first, uh, only called dry run, it was a small snow event that we, we recognized some of the gaps and we, we were prepared to close them in, in coordination. But, uh, we thought overall it was a very successful event on our But we thought overall was a very successful event when we coordinated with the RPA. But we do recognize that was the first time we coordinated very closely to RPA with clearing off the snow downtown. So we will tighten up that coordination through what we learned through our experience overall, I think went really well. However, sorry, let me just turn this phone off. But we are, we are addressing those concerns. We don't intend to ticket people in parking spaces that have been cleared. So as soon as they're cleared, we're taking the signs down. So that is, that is the plan. And so we've learned, we did some timing from the last event and we know to close that gap. So there's none of that taking place.
And I just wanted to say that the second time that you needed to do, but I did see the signs coming down quicker. So I think, yeah, you could see the improvement from the first snowstorm to the second event, whatever that was. It wasn't really snow, but yeah, it worked.
Right.
All right. And just to, and Marsha, just the last thing you pointed out, I do recall that in terms of the ticketing process, that the, I guess, no ticket or the electronic ticketing, I don't think would apply to this. It's my understanding is it only applies to metered and double parking.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Additional comments on this specific ordinance? All right. If not, I'll, oh, did I see a hand go up? Hold on. No? Okay. All right. Next item will be, sorry, lost my page. All right, here we go. The next item is bill number
11.
22, amending the city code, chapter 180, entitled Construction Codes, part eight, entitled International Building Code, section 802, entitled Amendments, letter J, entitled International Buildings/Fire Prevention Code, Board of Appeals, Article 2, entitled Membership, Sections 2.3, entitled Members, and 2.4, entitled Qualifications by allowing the participation of sitting HVAC, Electrical Examining Board, and Plumbing Board of Examiner members to also serve on the International Building/Fire Board of Appeals. I think this was explained to us pretty thoroughly two weeks ago. Does anybody have any comments or questions on this specific ordinance? All right. Just, I believe again, it's just allow us to use those existing board members in international board capacity. Otherwise, it becomes a complicated process. So I think I summarized that correctly. If there are no comments on that, I'll move on to the final ordinance for passage tonight. Amending City Code, Chapter 70 Personnel, Part 5, Leave Vacations and Holidays, Section 70-502 Holidays, Letter A, by adding Juneteenth as attached. Comments or questions on this ordinance? So this is adding Juneteenth as an official holiday, correct, for the, for the city of Reading? Frank, any comments? We have the administration.
It's just consistent with, it's now a state holiday. The collective bargaining units are it's part of the collective bargaining unit. So we're just memorializing and making sure everything's consistent. But it's an official holiday that the city recognizes because it's a state holiday. So we're just adding it to our list officially.
Okay. And additional comments, anyone?
I'm so excited that this is being added. Yeah, I can't wait to see Reading move in a more progressive, in a more progressive, to a more progressive future.
That's all right. Anybody else? All right. So that's it for ordinance is getting voted on this evening. We do have five ordinances for introduction. The first one is authorizing a transfer of $65,000 to the council budget from the general fund to cover expenses associated with the 275th anniversary for a two-year period. Comments or questions on this specific ordinance?
Council president, that's just a general fund, fund balance.
That's fine. We can amend that before two weeks out. So then if you could just make that change, then we'll remember to, well, maybe we should just, can we still amend it now before we vote on it? It's not a subject.
That's just, that's just an ordinance heading. It's not the ordinance itself.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. The next, any comments or questions again on that specific ordinance? All right. If not, the next ordinance being introduced is authorizing the appropriation of $4 million for the construction of the new Ninth and Marion Fire Station from Fund 43 City Facilities Construction Fund in the 2022 budget. This is general fund money, I believe we isolated a couple of years ago specifically for construction. Are there any comments on, and again, this isn't for the total cost of the facility, which you'll see in the next ordinance being introduced. Chief, did you want to speak to this or?
Yeah, I'll speak briefly. If you recall, as we discussed the project and the funding of the project, the construction fund was tossed around. We did pass an ordinance last year, if you recall, was to move 1 million of that for, but the trans, the appropriation to that never got done because of delays in the project. So as we talked about this during the budget process this year, to the all four million being allocated to the project.
All right. Additional comments, anyone? Johani?
Roger, if you could refresh our memories, please.
I'm sorry you cut off there, counselor. You're still not coming through to me anyways.
Johani, you're breaking up. Yeah, you're, I don't know if your mics loose? Check. Nope. Still can't hear you. Test, test?
Nope.
So Johani was asking what was the total cost of the project, I believe.
The total cost come in and so far the budget is 10.4 million. We have 1.4 in last year's capital and as you'll see, the four under the construction fund and the five from the ARPA fund. Oh, she's tangled up in her cord.
Johani, that was your question, correct? The total cost? Go ahead, Johani. I'm muted. That's a video.
I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now? Oh, boy. I'm having some serious technical difficulties. In any case, if you can remind us, chief, of the total cost of this project.
Yeah, that's what I just stepped through. The total budget at this point is 10.4 million for the project. We had 1.4 in the 21 CIP budget. And as you'll see here, 4 million here under the 47 construct, I'm sorry. Yeah, I believe it's the construction fund under the 43 line and then the 47 with the ARPA funding is 5 million.
All right. Additional comments or questions, anyone?
Quick question, chief. When the project supposed to be completed?
We're hoping towards the last quarter of the year, November, in that timeframe, November of '22.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments? All right. If not, the next item being introduced this evening is related to the same project. It's asking for the approval of $5 million on the RPA funding for the Ninth and Marion Fire Station. Any comments or questions on this specific item as well? And I believe this was on the initial, the initial list of recommendations that came forward from the initiation, which
Yes, it was, it was in the list of recommendations and we believe at this point in a similar fashion to what was done with the ARP fills. And I believe it was the convention center and all that in order, since the project's moving forward, we're asking for council's commitment to these funds for the project.
Okay, Marsha, sorry.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with this. I think the rest of the ARP funds that may be competitive in nature that are requested from community-based organizations, we need to take a different approach. But this one definitely is a city project, so fully supportive.
Thanks. Additional comments? Go ahead, Johani.
And I know we're scheduled to hear a presentation next week on the ARP funds. But up to date, how, I know that we've released, we've released, excuse me, 6 million so forth. So we know up to date, how much more? I can't recall if we released additional funds.
No, counselor.
So so far, just 6 million, right? We've released. Thank you.
Okay, additional comments, questions, anyone?
Just quick question, Jeff. The 5 million will be moved to the capital project budget?
No, we set up a fund for the American Rescue Plan funding. It'll be spent from that fund.
Thank you.
All right. Additional comments or questions, anyone? All right. If not, we'll move on to the next ordinance being introduced, authorizing the city to agree to a right of way and temporary construction easement with the Brooks County, with Brooks County for the county Spring Valley Road Bridge Replacement Project. If anyone can give us just a brief update on that. Kyle, is that something you can cover for us?
Yeah, the county's been working on replacing that bridge on Spring Valley Road down by the, the, over the spillway at the dam breast. And there's just a very small sliver of land there along the edge of the road. They have to widen a little bit in order to cut back the bank so they can get in there to actually replace the bridge. It's very small area, has no effect really on the park or anything.
This is just a formality. Any comments on that ordinance? Go ahead, Johani.
I thought I read in the attachments, was it a $500 transaction that the county is issuing the city?
Yeah, they'll pay us $500, which is typical for this type of nominal transaction.
So are they, so they're paying us, are they purchasing that piece of property? I was a little confused when I
Yeah, I think they have to, there has to be some form of consideration for it to take hold. So that's with why it's also the amount we use on PennDOT projects, usually when there's a temporary easement or a right of way that's like Kyle described, is a sliver of land.
All right. Any additional questions?
Yes, I have a question. Is that, that bridge I used to take to get to school? And so my question is, will that, will it be shut down? Like that, uh, I guess that part of the highway?
Yeah, when they do that on Spring Valley Roads, they'll, they'll probably detour you around the back end through that little development and then back out to back to where the factory is back in there. So yeah, there'll be, that'll, that'll have to be shut down in a detour.
Okay, and it's temporary. So how long would the construction be?
That I do not know. They did not tell me that. I could ask at my next RATS meeting.
All right, thank you.
And Wes, just for your reference, RATS is the Reading Area Transportation Study Group. That's where they review all the county project for roads and Kyle, I guess the technical committee and Donna is on the voting. Just in case you hear that name. Go ahead, Johani.
I'm just concerned with how the bill reads because if we're having, if we're settling for the $500 for that piece, shouldn't the bill? And I understand this is just the header of the bill, but shouldn't it be more explicit to reflect that transaction or is it not necessary?
The number's in the ordinance. I think that's sufficient.
I saw, yeah, I just didn't see it on, you know, so if a viewer or someone who's looking at this agenda reads the bill, I guess it's not clear, but I guess it would be up to the person reading to look at the attachments. And I mean, there were 125 pages on this agenda. I just want to put that out there. I don't know who's looking, every page.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the most clear cut, but it's, I think it's, it's the number, the $500 is in the ordinance itself. It's not like buried in it. In like a exhibit or I think it's, so I think it's satisfactorily straightforward.
All right. Any other comments on that ordinance? A $500 would help the city council pizza fund. By the way, I'm just throwing it out there. It's future consideration. I'm only kidding. Okay. Finally, under introduction of ordinances, approving the settlement agreement pertaining outstanding loans related to the Book Boundary Building at 148 North 4th Street. My understanding is we're going to be discussing that this evening in an executive. So we'll just hold off on comments on that at this time. We'll move on to resolutions. There are four appointments and reappointments. We'll be able to take them collectively together in the meeting. The first one is reappointing Cecile Grimshaw to the Reading Water Authority. Dale Eisenhower is being, Eisenhofer is being appointed to the HVAC board, a reappointment of Catherine Cobb Holmes to the Human Relations Commission, and an appointment of Peter Rye to the Planning Commission. If you have any comments on those appointments and reappointments? All right. Free? Do you have a comment? You're on mute. I'm sorry.
Gosh, I didn't realize I was on mute. I didn't, no, I don't have a comment. I was, I was just telling myself to stop because I do have a question, but it's not for where we're at now. Sorry.
That's okay. Oh, good, good. Good job. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on those appointments?
Johani and I do, Jeff. Johani was first.
Go ahead, Johani, and then Marsha.
I'll keep it very short and sweet. I mean, we have great additions to our existing boards and commissions. You know, I'm always pleased at at the level of professionalism, commitment and determination that we have from our constituents, people who step up to serve. That's it.
All right. And Marsha?
We're very qualified individuals. And I think our nominations committee would welcome a third person to join us for the interviewing. So you get to know who the people are that are being appointed.
Yeah. Again, they meet on a Monday once a month, I believe, at 4 o'clock right before the council meeting. Appreciate Marsha and Johani.
Twice a month we meet.
Twice a month we meet, continuing to fill that role. We used to have a third. We agreed if there's a dispute, you know, one, one vote, it will just bring it to the body and figure it out from there. But hopefully that won't happen. So, all right. If there are no other comments on that issue, I believe that will end our business for this evening as far as our regular meeting. Before we go into an executive session, does anybody have anything that's pressing for public discussion this evening? Again, you'll have an opportunity during the public meeting as well, but just more from a an administrative standpoint, any items anybody needs to cover? If not, we'll go into an executive session. All right. Linda, do you mind clearing out the room and cutting off the recording and just letting us know when we are prepared to move forward? Thank you.